Харкалир охчун цер полорин тангакин хара затнер парирего. Хоризон хай гаган неру стагаяннэ цер бастарин, ева аhasi. Ашхадан кайн орерун татскин, мэр амен ория хан тибман ваира. Хоризон иерека ярутунинг уыи этер, ёс манук сераедарьяннэ. Есим омашхадайз нерес, кохчунэнк полорот, ев гэскэсин кайс иерегоян мэр йертар. Пайц, нахканайт, анкам миевэс, инзинкс эстивбвад скелам хишэцнэлуу, ев хэнтрелуу, воро ведев анснох шапатаверчин тарцял. Полор айн арит нерун вор ёс хан тибетс амер хайрен агитс нерун. Дзанот, ев андзанот, полорнал дагавин зарматсад нуин харцуудаин те урэ хоризона, гам инчэгав хоризонин. Айн бэс вор, анснох авелик кан йергуку гэс амис нерун татскин мен крете амен ория труу тямп гэхишэцнэйн, еб хэнтрэнк цезме анонк, воронк артеним агэтидэн мез. Вор тукал цер гаркин дегиакбаек, полор дзанот нерун, хара затнерун, парегам нерун, аскагитс нерун, вор хоризона гарелийт иделэн танмена, але хавакима, антенайма мичотав, ев йересун мек гэт ветт тавайн аликов. Айсор иерегоян дагавин, ев нахкан жишт айсте хаснилес, дзанот мэ бада хапар деснэло, взиз харцузд те урэ хоризона. Гэхэнтрэн, ваги гэхэнтрэн, вор полорин дегиакбаек амича бэс химаиск. Гам зраакри аварденьет гбэртутек, херахоса, ев тимецек дзанотима, парегамима иматт тавек, вор анпокч харавайн Калифорния дарацкин гарелийт идел хоризона, ев антамен инчбэс воросинк цэрия парш мек антенайи цахс хокалов, ворун аржекэгэ даруперитеревэс, тасэн мичев карасун гам хисун доллар. Мек анкамайт кумарагэ бэжарек, ев антенай мичотав гэкэтнек йересун мек анпокч ветт тавайн алик, ев гэтидэ хоризона кэсан чор жам. Антунэцек анкам миевэс хэнтранкэс, ев ка дарецек. Хачик, иск айсор, менк ашхадан кайн шаптаван уремэн йергорт орне. Йерек шапти маисий йоти мэр то аргунмэ. Маисий йота, кэнишан аге антамен йергу шапат мер гэпаажнэн мез, Лос-Анджелеси ка каин ант ханур андрутюн неру таваганэн. Ворун таваганэ гэзуу катеби маиси кэса мэгин. Ев аhasi, айт андрутюн нерун мези бидинер гайатсэнэ, гам айс шэрчана бидинер гайатсэнэ, хачоёлубаракаин, ев айт хачоутян меч тук, мец дерагадарутюн бидинен агаан шушт, текнадзуу Джон Чойэ, вор мези хеде айсор, айс иерегоян. Мези хеде наев, Холливуди хайтади ханснахунпен Тереза Эримьяна, инчбэс наев мези хеде хамайинки изабак нерин, барзабэс нер гайатсэнэ, вор Холливуди хайпнак чутюна, манук чульяна, дигэ кемни асна парш бокчунэнк айсорван мэр зуруцагитс нерэм. Good evening, lady and gentlemen. Good evening, John.
Good evening, or I should like to say, баравзез.
Баравзез. When and where did you learn that much Armenian?
Well, I was had a chance to learn a little bit of Armenian, a few words here and there. Over the last year of the campaign, we talked to so many Armenian constituents in the 13th district. It's just been a pleasure to get to know this community more, and I'm excited about the opportunity to represent such a significant community of Los Angeles.
Make sure you learn some of the important phrases that they might use, and they might mean certain things, so make sure you learn that part as well.
I'm learning every day, studying hard.
Okay, okay, good student then. And before I go to the details, I'd like to make our viewers acquainted with you. Who is John Choey?
Well, I'm an immigrant to this country, who has, was raised by parents who taught me that it's important to give back to our community. And with that sense of responsibility, I've been someone who's really been an active fighter, dealing with issues of poverty and in our communities right here in Los Angeles for my entire life. And I'm a public servant. I'm someone who really wants to improve our neighborhoods and someone who's passionate about fighting on behalf of our communities right here in Los Angeles.
And now you want to take it to a new and higher level by being a candidate for the Los Angeles City Council. What makes you think that you are better than me, although I'm not a candidate?
I'm certainly not better than you.
As a candidate.
But I think, I think some of the experiences that I've been able to have over the years have prepared me to do some good work on the city council. I've had an opportunity to work for elected officials and here in Los Angeles, both council member, a council member as well as the mayor of Los Angeles. I've managed one of the largest departments in the city, the Department of Public Works, a department that's responsible for many of the issues, the everyday issues that people have in their neighborhoods, whether they be roads and sidewalks, or their trash and trees and streetlights. And I think I have a really good understanding of what the day-to-day issues in people's communities are here, right here in the 13th district, as well as having a broader vision for where we want to be as a city in the next five, 10, and 15, 20 years. I think we need leaders on the city council that are gonna forge a path forward on issues of environmental sustainability, creating jobs for everyone and economic opportunity for all, dealing with our basic infrastructure challenges like traffic and the condition of our roads, and making our neighborhood safer. And these are experiences that I've had over the years, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to represent that 13th district.
And I totally understand you, because usually people think that the most important issues are the social issues, economic issues, as you mentioned, job issues and so on, especially in this economic downturn that we are living through since 2008. But what you mentioned is really very important as well. Streets, pavements, sidewalks, thrash, parks, and so on and so forth. Anyhow, we'll be back to the platform in general, and I'd like to give some opportunity to the lady and the gentleman who are with us tonight, Тереза Эримьяна Артендзанот цер полорин харкалип парегамнер, менк пазметс зурус нерун эц азэнк хайтади кэзов, ев аhasi айсор, Тереза анган нер гайатсэнэ, инчбэс вороси Холливуди уремэн хайтади краасениаги, ев Тереза кидэн вор Холливуди хайтади краасениагэ гэзуу акци Джон Чойин, инчу.
Шнур агаутун хамар арачиманук, вор мези айсор хөдөл бирэлэг, ев туртавек, вор менк айстэл инэнк.
Бетке китнан говкерэн мэр тэгнадзуу нерэ.
Аншушт, аншушт. Холливуди хайтада инчбэс асэцсик ажакцуу мэр Джон Чойин. Джанэ мези шат импресса арен, инчбэс асен. Менк вор, вор бэс хамайин, мишна, менк текнадзуу нэ, пэндро менк текнадзуу нэ, вор мези жишт, ев мези жишт кэ нэр гайатсэнэ апакайун. Ев мези кэ найэн, ев деталов кэ хасканэн мэр хамайинкин, ев джанэ айт мартнэ. Джанин инчкан жаманагэш джанан чумэ, ев гаоогацам иран авелавес верчэш джанан джанотана. Мэдикани амен деталы мэр хамайинки, ев кани дега кэнатэ. Абрилкасан чорси хамар цааспавуцан мэр комеморэйшенер, вор деги унэцан. Инкэ чорс хат кэнатэ, ев амен мэгин Холливуди хайтада инчбэс болорэ гидэн ревайвал through art, комеморэйшен унэцан, ворун жаманак. йерт асарт нерэ мэр Холливуди беретсин иранц стекца гортцуцу нерэ, накар нерэ, накарцуцу нерэ, вор менк дерецсин кэ батари вэр мэр кентронун, ев ворош мартсин те баруу сервак, те ворош йеркер йеркэцсин, ев джанэ нэсстав, ев зуруцэт полорий, нэсет.
Ев гентатрэн, вор айт полор ирен хамар арит миевэс ян, вор кичмав авелилав дзанотана, авелилав джанчна, бегуин хай хамайинкин. Ев кани гэхосин хай хамайинки массин, харкалип парегамнер, мези хеде йердасарт, мэ манук чульяна. Цезме шат чадэр хат гэбэс Холливуди тереевэспнагич нерэ лавгэ джанчна мануг, воро ведев мануг Холливуди сурпгар абетмайр, дигэ звомеч авак саргаваке артен, ев маснагиутян пэжишки окнаган. Холливуди пнагич хеде ва пар вор бэс хамайинки изабак мануг. Инч кузэсэсел айс зирэн нерсий, ев инчу хамар лавакуин текнадзуун гэдеснэви Джон Чойэ.
Китэк баром ауктнакс, ев арач шачнур агаутун, вор айс бом хоскэ кэтнавим. Йес Джон Чойя Абрилкасан чорсин, ев вор кайларшав ягав. Маснагицэ, ев иско бос нери хед, ев хайл мэр мус хай жогу вуртин хет, мас казмэц ин кайларшавин. Ев мияцав инзи Джон Чойя, ев, ев вор гэ кайлэйн кирару хет, базматив хос акцию нерун эцан кирару хет. Ев нуин харцуу мириэнтэви, эсий Джан, инч небаджарэ, гам инчуф тун авелавгэлз мэр хамайинки хамар. Ир хос керэ шат хузи чейн, инчу хамар, иннэ бадаг мэр дзерунинерин арачтанэлнэ. Манавант деснэло вирэнц арохчаган хэнтир нерэ. Вор бэс иннэр анк уненан шат лав транспортэйшен, вор бэс деснэ нирэнц доктор нерин, шат каревор мек банер воринкэ инзи асэц. Йергорт банэдэса, ир модэцуу мэр йерт асарт нерин, пэстик манук нерин, вор торошак нерэ брнэлэн иранц дзеркерин. Ев наил казмэц иранцэд, ев хосад, ев кареворцуун, тавец мэр цааспавуцян. Ев мек уришмиван, айсор гидек вор болор фейсбуков мек эмуси хет габерим эчен. Ев деса вор артен Джан эскса зэ сигничер пейч. Сторагруцян эчмэ вор конгрессин, угучун, деби конгрессин пайкаргэдани, вор бэс мэр жогу вурти дзайнат деснэн, сторагруцуун нерэ деснэн, вор бэс мэр хайц, хайцан цааспавуцуун антунви айсор. Ев, ев вор деса айт модэцуу мэ ира, шат инзи хамар хузи чэр, ев эзгаси вор инка жиш текнадзуунэ мэр хамайинки хамар.
Хусанкев, ираганутян меч цэаспавуцян панатсеви нер гайатцуу, ев цэаспавуцян панатсеви антуну, мэ тереевс кичмав авелий парцермагартаги, ев харце, ев ашхаданки гэгарудий айну амен айнив. Ган авелий арория мэдакутюн нер, воронк бетке инэгади уненал, воро ведев айт мек гастэ, инчбэс вороси мэр кавакатс нерун, мэр пнагич нерун, мэр хаванинки изабак нерун, амен ория гарик нерун, ев антатскин. So, John, you were talking about your platform in general terms. Let's go to some details if you don't mind. We have, we have people in different age groups who have different needs. We have the younger generation, they have educational needs, they have social needs. We have the elderly who have, again, social needs, medical and health issues. What are you planning for these people?
Well, I think the Armenian community, particularly the Armenian community in the 13th district in Hollywood, in East Hollywood, represents a community that I know very well. The challenges that we have, all the things you mentioned, the challenge to be safe in our neighborhoods, to have access to quality healthcare and quality education, to feel like you can actually build something in terms of starting a business in the city of Los Angeles. These are all very, very important things. Conversations that I've had with many, many residents, young and old. I was able to visit one of the great schools in the area, Pelebo School, just two weeks ago, and the children from a very young age all the way through high school, who are really the future leaders of the, of this, the city of Los Angeles and the Armenian-American community, understanding that they have challenges to keep on growing such a great program on campus. And I'm looking forward to participate with, to continue support those efforts as a council member. So education has to continue to be part of the plan. This city council can play a role in that by fighting for more resources and actually dealing with a lot of the issues in the neighborhoods to make sure the neighborhoods are safe. Of course, there's nothing more important to our future than the children. So having a safe neighborhood and ability for students to learn in a safe environment is incredibly important. That's something that I'm gonna be very focused on. I think economic opportunity for everyone is very important. You know, we have many, many immigrant communities in Los Angeles. Some, many, many individuals don't speak English at all, but that shouldn't prevent them from being able to start a business and lead that life that so many came to Los Angeles to seek. We need to do more to make our city more business-friendly, particularly for small businesses looking to open up new shops. The permitting process is very, very complicated and takes way too long. There is a very serious lack of coordination within the city to actually open up a product, open up a medical practice, or a coffee shop, or a restaurant. We need to, we need to make that process more efficient, and we need to provide services and assistance in language to our immigrant communities. I really want to make sure that city services are provided in every language in the city, including Armenian. I think that's very important to make sure that everything is accessible for this important community. There are a lot of other issues that impact this community as well. You've mentioned some of the seniors. We don't have enough senior housing in the city of Los Angeles. We don't have enough low rent and affordable housing so that people can actually afford to live within the city limits, live close to where they work. And I want to do more on that regard. I've actually spent a number of years working with the city council to try and increase the amount of affordable housing units. We need more senior housing in our, in our neighborhoods, particularly in Little Armenia, where folks can actually move around, and that connects directly to public transit. Housing and transit are inseparable. We need to build more affordable housing in our communities, but we also need to connect transit so that the transit dependent, like our seniors, folks that don't drive around, can actually move around the city, can get to the hospital to get checks, to get health checkups, can move and shop and take care of themselves and be self-sufficient. That's incredibly important. I was part of an effort to successfully get hundreds of millions of dollars, of federal dollars, for public transportation right here in Los Angeles. It was a long effort, that was a coordination between environmental advocates, business community groups, and organized labor, and it's gonna take that type of leadership, that type of experience, to really make substantive change here in Los Angeles.
How easy or how hard is this?
Well, it's hard.
It's hard, isn't it?
It's hard, it's hard.
You know, especially because, I'm asking this question because the area, the district you are trying to represent, the 13th district, as much as I know, has one of the, or not one of the, has more of the better, if not the best, medical or healthcare institutions in Southern California. And that attracts some people, attracts some people who want to be close to these areas or to these, to these facilities. And that puts a certain burden and load on the city, and of course, accordingly, on the city council or the city council member as well.
Well, it's absolutely the responsibility of the city council to guide that process, to make sure that we have public transit that connects our commercial corridors with our residential base. You're speaking about the medical centers like Kaiser Hospital, Children's Hospital, Hollywood Presbyterian, that are huge sources of healthcare, but also huge sources of revenue and job creation. Incredibly important that the city council member for this area understands that, reaches out to these businesses and understands how to better connect our communities to these services. It's incredibly important to build a public transportation system that actually gets people to where they, where they need to go, right now.
Fast.
Efficiently. Instead, rather than taking three hours to get a few miles, we need to be able to get there in a way where it's more efficient to take public transportation than it is to drive. We're not there yet, but we can get there if we continue to have leaders that understand a vision for where we want to be and continue to move along that path of building a really connected public transportation system. And I'm confident that we can do that. Yes, it's hard, but absolutely it's possible.
We're up to it, huh?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Before I came here actually, I was listening to the radio and I heard something that made me just a little happy, and that was that the city of Los Angeles created 2,700 jobs last month in the field of healthcare. Now, that is something good, but that's not enough. We'll go back to that point later on after talking to Teresa. Teresa, айс полоро, айс полоро, антарабес гэсвин, гэлэсвин, полор, текнадзуу нерун говмэн. Алайт мек экаха каин хоруу ти текнадзуу, конгресси текнадзуу, нуинст наха каган текнадзуу. Хима, полорнал тижварутюн нерэ, хэнтир нерэ, харцерэ гэ джанчна. Мануга медикал ассист, фанэ физичн ассистэн, цэ пэжишки окнаганэ. Полорнал ахта джаначума диагнозиса анэл кидэн, ев гэнэн. Пайц, луцум нерун массин йерпэман, ираганутюна, ираганутюна, чем эсер гамкэ, ираганутюна, тижварутюн нер гэстээцэ. Айс баракаин инч гарелийэннэ, вор бэсий окнэнк, ев хедабэнтэнк, хедевинк, ев окнэнк айн текнадзууин, вор менк андрадзэнк, ев хасутзадзэнк баштонима. Вор бэсий гарина ираганатсэнэ мэр ихцерэ.
Асканале, сэ, ятэ харцэ жиш тасканам, инчбэс менк окнэнк, вор мэр текнадзуу.
Инчбэс хедевинк, ев, ев окнэнк, вор ираганатсэнэ айн папакнэ, вор менк унин.
Хима, шачнур агаутун харцэ хамар, шат каревор, вор миш менк маснагцэнк. Те кавьякуцан жаманак, те элэкшэнзи жаманак, те ев вор мэр текнадзуун антарви, иран хет шаорнак, шаорнак релешнэшпе уненанк, вор иран хет гаоогананк, мэр хэнтир нерэ нэр гайатсэнэ. Джон Чойин, инчбэс менк нэр гайатсринк, хасканумэ, детал нерэ мэр хамайинки, ев хасканмэ инча хэнтир нерэ, ев чимэнум, ев асмэ эсия, ев эссент бидимана. Хима, ятэ нэшэла, вор хелткэрэ хэнтирэ, йерт асарт уцан хэнтир неркан, ев инкэ узумэ, инкэ шат хамайвада, зымалвада мэр йерт асарт уцан хет. Инкэ, инчкан мэр хамайинка похвэла, инкэ хамайинки хет гэпохве, ев хэнтир нерэ вонцгэ похве, инкэ тхэнтир нерэ хет шкэшаорнакве, девал пани, мэр хайдади хет аткапэс. Вор хайдада миш хортакцела, ев миш мэр хамайинки арачшэла, ирахэнтир нерэ. Инкэ мэр хет гэ хамагорзи, вор гаоогананк, шаорнагэнк, иран хосэ, ев мэдиканэл инча хэнтир нерэ. Сэ хамайинка, гаооган мэр хет мотик лини, хайдади хет мотик лини. Ев миш мези бидга тэрэгасэн инчэн нор хэнтир нерэ. Ев политко процесси миш бидга энвалд линэн. Маснагцэн, мияйн ворштэ андрутюнэй жаманак, ай лэрив антар нур дарван татско. Оринаки хамар, хима, газ компенни нор гортмас смарт митерзэн дэнун. Ев хайдада газ компенни хет партнерэ, ев бацадрмас хай хамайинкин, масар мас, те смарт митер инчбэс бана, ев инчбэс гаоогасду, воревэ март, поххэнай, эт смарт митери барчаров. Хима, хайдади хет иманал, хамайинкин иманал, менк эт тэрэготцуунэ, басмаснэ мек. Хайдади хет линелов, ев хамайинка хайдадин хет галов, гаоогэн менк мясин, миш мэр хэнтир нерэ, миш мэр цанкуцуунэ, гаоогананк, тэрэгаснэ, мэр ка капет нэри, инчбэс Джан.
Искердэ анснинг шнур агалян, Тереза, искердэ анснинг ваги хамайинки изабак нерун. Мануга айсор генер гайатсэнэ, айт ираби джага. Вор бэс хамайинки изабак, сэ вораган хамайинки ка каци. Инчбэс бетке тун, ёс муса хедевил. Ев деснэлтэ, инчбэсий ашхаданк гадани Джон Чойя, гам эксвайзин, ярвур гэндерви. Ев миш таортактутян меч манал, вор бэсий миш айт мартэ дегиагэлам мэр харцеров. Ятэ им харцерес мек, айс ин хамайинки харцерэн меки антатрэнк луцветсав. Урахэнк, пайц, ворч полор харцер луцветсан, мишдал гарик нерган. Инчбэс бетке айс полорин хедевил, кипанай, and keep them informed at the same time.
Им гардзиковэс маснагцуун аменэн кареворэнэ. Ятэ йердасарт линелов, ятэ амен мэгэс мэр маснагцуунэ перэнк, мэр харцеру угэнк, жиш цевов, ев мэр харцери бадасхан нерэ баханчэн, гам айо, гам ворч. Волби андэ пейч.
And with some explanations.
With some explanations. Востаэм, вор айсор тегус хайдада линелов, гам воревэ ми казмакербучун, хай казмакербучун, миш подраста хай изабаки, хай йерт асарти, гам хай дзеруни хоскэлэселу, гардзикэлэселу. Ев наэ иранц гортзэ, вор бэсий эт харцерэ, эт гардзик нерэ, данэн эн март ганс, вор бэсий эт харцери луцуун нерэ дан. Ев шат тюрунэ, гарцэн маснагцуунэ берелэ, бет гам менк авелий йерт асарт неров, гам хай хамайинка бет гам маснагиц лини. Чик арох нэстэл, ев эспасел, вор бэсий вонцуу рсилвэр платру, вамени чарамцэвирэнц.
Айсте хаванапар, хэнтрэн, ятэ верчапсий. Айсте хаванапар бетке наев нэшэл, шештэл, ев шат хыстагорэн эселвур, айс полоро бетке ла чарашаутэнэн херу. Воро ведев воманк, гэ порцэн хамагаргэ чарашаэл, ев верч, верчо, ев иренк, ев иренч урчин нерэ, ган нам вэнас нерву и антаргавил. We were talking about the, you know, the checks and balances in general. How could the community follow up with the, with the representative, I should say, after election, after being elected? And how they can keep in contact all the time with what their needs are, which needs were met, and what still needs to be followed up, and what else could be done?
Sure.
In that sense, what do you think, or how do you think you can keep the communication on with the community members as long as you are serving in the position?
Well, I think there are a couple of things. It is really the responsibility of the elected officials to make access to information as easy as possible. Currently, the city does not do a very good job of that. And I think for me, everything about the way that I will operate as a council member and the way that my staff will operate is to proactively go out and engage the community, especially the Armenian community. And I think what that, we do that in a couple of ways. One, I plan to hire several Armenian-American staff members that come from the community, that speak the language, that can act as a voice for the, for the council, but also for the community. And really to inform and also inform the community as well as inform me about what's important. I think that's one, that's something that I'm very much looking forward to. The level of talent in the Armenian-American community is high already in my own campaign. We have four full-time Armenian-American staffers that are a central part of our campaign and our outreach. So that's something I'm absolutely committed to. One of the other things is that council members too often after they get elected decide to spend a lot of, too much time in city hall. And for me, it's really about going out to the community and educating them about what the opportunities are, what the services are, and what the resources are. I fundamentally believe that it is a real responsibility of the city council to inform proactively the community about what services and what issues are important. Finally, I will say that I have a, I have a very personal touch when it comes to my approach to the city council. I have given my cellphone number out to everyone I've talked to on the city during the campaign, and I've committed to all of them that I won't change my number after the election. It will be publicly available.
I was going to ask you that question, whether you were gonna change the number after you get elected.
In fact, I'm happy to give it out right now. So if anybody is watching, they could take my number down, and they would be able to call me before, during, and after the election. My phone number is 213-446-3732. That's my personal cellphone number, because I believe that if you can't get a response from the city, and if you can't get a response from my staff, you should be able to call your council member directly. That's what local service is about.
So now you're planning on spending much more time in the city, not in the city hall?
Right, right.
All right. One of the, one of the main problems maybe that we are still suffering from is the economic issue. We haven't been cured yet from the problems that we had, and especially the middle class since 2008 and onward, was, and I think still is squeezed in a very, very narrow area. And that is something that has to be corrected. That is, that is an issue, and I think, I know it's not, it's not easy. It's easy to talk about, it's easy to ask about, but it's not easy to solve the problem. But there's no problem that cannot be solved. It might take a little more effort, it might take a little more time, but after all, it will be solved. So specifically regarding the economic issues, you did talk about the businesses, small businesses, but generally about the economic issues, jobs, and better financial situation for the middle-class families. What do you have in mind?
Well, I think a couple of things are happening in this country that are very alarming. The richer getting richer, and the poorer getting poorer. And I've seen that firsthand in the type of work that I've done. I've seen how hard it is for families just to make rent and pay for food, let alone send their kid to college and provide healthcare for the family, fundamental building blocks of a stable community. For me, where I'm really focused is lifting people out of poverty and directly into working, into the middle class. And the only way to do that is to create jobs in the city of L.A., and not just minimum wage jobs. Because minimum, you can't survive, you can't support a family on minimum wage jobs. I'm looking at creating jobs with decent wages and benefits, jobs that you can actually build a family around. I've done that work before. We figured out how to leverage public dollars to ensure that local people from low-income communities have a chance to work on public projects. That's in construction, that's on the permanent side. This is a common sense way to reinvest public dollars, tax dollars, right back into local communities and lift people out of poverty. Those are the types of policies that I want to push on the city council, first of all. Secondly, I think it is important to talk about making the city process more efficient. I talked about that previously. I really am gonna focus on how to make the city process easier to understand and shorter. Third, I think we really have to have a conversation about increasing jobs in the city beyond just project by project, business by business, but looking at the entire city.
The big picture.
The big picture. And one of the, L.A. has a lot of strengths, a lot of things that are going for it. One of the big strengths is that L.A. is a tourist destination. In fact, the tourism and hospitality industry is the number-one industry in the entire city of Los Angeles. We have tremendous economic output from our hotels, our restaurants, from Hollywood tourists that come to go to Hollywood Bowl to see the art beaches, but we don't have a comprehensive plan for how to connect those destinations together. It is hard for tourists to move around the city of L.A. It is hard for them to find attractions, it is hard for them to get transportation. So I want to push a citywide policy that looks at marketing the city of Los Angeles as a destination outside of the city, outside of the state, and outside of the country, more effectively, but also looking internally at the city. How do we better connect our destinations together? How do we say that Hollywood, which is in the district, which is the brand of Los Angeles, how do we better promote Hollywood and make the overall experience better, while also building an economy that provides opportunities for everyone, not just for the richest, the richest of our, in our communities, but for everyone across the board? We really, we really need to rebuild that middle class, and it's one way we can do it.
And John, honestly, did you talk to any one of the city council members, the current city council members, about these issues? Did you have the chance to talk to them?
Well, I've talked to them in the past through the type of work that I've done, and I understand these issues because I've actually...
No, as a candidate now.
As a candidate. Well, I will tell you this, that I have not heard anyone else talk about these issues.
That's why I'm asking the question. I was trying to find if there is any... I was trying to find if there is any common ground between you and them.
Well, I think there's a recognition that this is an important industry for the city, but what it really is about is leadership. And I think as a, as a council member for the 13th district representing Hollywood, there's a clear necessity for, for this council member and this neighborhood to lead that effort, to lead that conversation. And that's why I'm so excited to have this opportunity to represent this district.
And Theresa, dasni ergort, dasni erort andradaratska, vorsher cham nere generalne?
Dasni erort andradaratska, galini Little Armenia, Hollywoodi masnavor masse, galini Silver Lake, Atwater Village, galini Franklini, Bajina, naev galini...
Incha Griffith Park.
Vorosh masse, vorosh masse. Yev naev galini mincha piko andradaratska.
Isk vetchi vetcho? Shatla. Vetchi vetcho ais polor iragan analo hamar ais teknadzun gam boevi ail teknadzu, betke andervi. Andervelu hamar betke kvener estana. Isk menk aytm kvenerun masin gam kaviyargelun masin, inch guzen kesel aisor. Kanima harcer gan vorons masin guzen gergin ankam shesdes. Megi vor anon koronk artsana krevat, chen vorbes kaviyargoh, sav isirt arten ushatsadzen. Paits anon koronk artsana krevazen, koned dunen kaviyargelu hamar dagavin aytm ari tu unin. Paits vetchi vetcho kaviyargutian dogost nere, yev aytm dogost nerun garevorutunna, nishanagutunna. Inchbes gareli ais polor sheschtel ankam yers.
Sireli hayrenakitzner, mer hay kven, mer anzna, anzkan, anznan, kan kven, mer zainne. Yev mer hamanki masnavor kven nere, mia sinme kven nere, mer hamanki ujne. Nerka pain, hay hamanki kven nere vor arten smit eden, vor arten hansnevazen. Vorbes, hema martik vor meshdakan tanit kaviyargoren, martikan vor arten statselen ballot nere yev hansnelen. Hema nerka pain, avli shad hayren kaviyargel kantel maisi, marti hingi entruzunej jamanak. Yev kashawnakvi bartzanal, mer taveri ais mincha maisik san mege yefokan kaviyaku san vetchin ordne. Nerka pain, xan hing tokosa, am boch kveneri, hay hamanki kvenen. Vichosko, shad meds daburutunna mer hay mekka analu, es kaviyaku san mech, es elekseni mech, entruzunei mech. Mer zaine kvoroshii, ovalinelo, mer kaki chortu antama, chorti antama. Nishanavor gaz menk analu, te ovalinelo mer kakapet de Los Angelesi. Yev shad gare vorae vor menk masnakzeng, yev menk, masnakzeng vor menk voroshun antam lineng, te ovalinelo et antama. Yev mi banel, inchbes manu ge asaler, arten usha, yeta, yeta artsana krevatz chek kaviyargelu, arten dushbachta bar usha, yerek vetchin ordne. Paits yeta kaviyargorek, arten artsana krevatzek, yev guzek meshdakan tanit kaviyargodarnak, karoge der jamanak gam mincha mus yerek shad tiora maisitas chorsa, vor gran swek vorbes meshdakan tanit kaviyargoh. Amstas chorsitz yeto, yeta der ate chek arel. Yev artsana krevatzek karoge maisik san mekin, der polling location nere gennak, yev ain dek kaviyargek anzap.
Ais polor haytadi hansna chumpi, yev haytadi krasen yagi hosk nere yev hor tora. Hamanki zavagin inch kesel, inchbes betke ais polor iraganatsen el?
Shad türun, betke ertank, yev betke kvedank. Am yurakan churusunink mer bartaganochun nere. Betke am payman koned koned, maisik san mekin, enanzere vor betke etan hatuk degere vor besirenc kven tan. Betke nerka ghetnevel, yev betke tan, mi ain guzenan mi ban sheschtel. Vor, voman kan vor dunitsen uzun kaviyaku sun analu. Xantrum menk vor et ballot nere toch iran kirants zerkov, posta lionin hansnen, vorbesi jish tuhutyamp etah hasni, jish kven nere hashvarkuma togarvi. Isk yeta vor dunitsi chibidanen, am sux san mekin, garzumen bolor skaroge etan mer hatuk poler urte vor betkam nerka ghetnevenk. Orinak anzina sinzi, nersin komu menk anchel, voman kan uris degere. Amen mart karoge emanal, yeta harzun nerunen karoge zangel, tiver karoge tzezie asel, vorbesi jish tuhutzunna tan kur betke etan, yev mer kven nere tan kaidorba.
Manuk chuliana pejishki oknaga ne, manuk dun yega mudun ische?
Vorosh chapv.
Is abrili dasni hingin tax fileerir?
Extension.
Extension, vuchin, paits vetchi vetcho tax file bidienes che. Gernasasel ais taric chemu zer tax vijarel?
Hunaravur che.
De inchbes uremen martik gernanasel, or yes ais taric chemu zer kaviyargel?
Chen gernar, inchun hamar vorovedev amen martutzain e gare vorae.
Yev aytmegi kaporzen, menk amen ankam pochansel mer harkeri hayrenakitznerun. John, it is our last couple minutes. It's you and your voters, it's you and your constituents. What do you want to tell them?
Well, I think a couple of things. I'm so, I've been so lucky to have been able to experience so many great aspects of the Armenian culture in the last several months, you know, and I, I think there's a real connection between my background, my community, my parents, where I grew up in the Korean-American community, and the history of the Armenian community. In fact, I've, like many relationships, I've started with, I started with one individual friend who I've known for almost seven years now. And we've shared an Armenian-American who, we were able to share stories and commonalities between the way our families, our family values and the way we were raised as kids, and the challenges between generations, between our, our parents and our generation as being an immigrant community. And I think what I've realized from that is that, is a story that repeats itself here in Los Angeles, that, you know, Los Angeles is really home to, is a home made up of immigrants. It is a home that represents the best hopes and dreams of immigrants from all over the world. And it's for that reason that I'm so excited to represent this district, the 13th district, and to represent the nation's second biggest city. As an immigrant myself, to think about all the diversity as a strength, not as a tool to divide communities, but really as a strength. And the ability to impact those communities every single day on the city council, dealing with local neighborhood issues, pushing to make our neighborhoods safe and clean, our schools, high-quality public education, high-quality private education, and to provide services and accessibility to everyone in this community, I think is a really important mission of mine. The, the ability and opportunity to do that work is my passion, it's my dream. And I'm so excited to partner with the Armenian community to improve Little Armenia, Hollywood, the 13th district, and the city of Los Angeles.
Everyone, and I mean everyone who has come to this great country, has come for a better life.
Right.
So, let's make their hopes into a reality and let's make their dreams come true. Harkeri paragamner yegek, mia snapar shunagaalutun, haytneng mer aisor banzdar utzagitznerun. Mezi yederst teknadzu John Choey, vorae Los Angelesi kakaayn xoruti teknadzun e, yev vorun antan urindrutun nere dey gunenan maisi kasan mekin. Vorun haravirvazen masnakzelu polor, anonk voronk gapanagin Los Angeles kaki sahaman neren ers. Yev iravunk unin, arantz irenc iravunk eziche lu, iravunk unin kaviyargelu. Hedewapar shunagaalutun gehaytneng, aisor ban mer zarutzagitznerun. John, thank you for being here with us tonight, and we wish you all the best. And we understand after getting elected, you have a lot to do. And that's why we wish you all the best. Take it easy. Theresa, shunagaalutun, inchbes naev shunagaalutun manuk kezi. Sharon agetse kaashqadanke vorbesi, menk am poch hamanki vorbes, mia snapar kettnenk ure mer hamar lavu, mer hamar jishte, yev ashqading aytm antatsko yev aytm uutyan. Aisbes harkeri paragamner mer zaruitza hasav ir awardin, vorovedev shamanaga. Mezi aytm best kettela tre, hedewapar drakri awardin chen moran naev. Mets, xorin shunagaalutun naev haytnel tzezie, yev mish parinand tzez.